All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone. This is the second public hearing in case number 19-0252-Rule, which involves a petition from the Vermont Department of Public Service to amend Public Utility Commission Rule 3.700. My name is Micah Howe, and I'm a staff attorney at Public Utility Commission. With me are Commissioners Margaret Cheney and Sarah Hoffman. Can everyone hear me okay before I go on? Okay. This rulemaking proceeding was initiated in response to a petition from the Department of Public Service that is now required by statute after the legislature passed Act 79 last session. Act 79 also specifies some substantive requirements for the amended rule. For those not familiar with the proposed changes, under consideration in this rulemaking, Act 79 requires the Commission to revoke Commission Rule 3.700 to include one-touch make-ready and self-help procedures for entities seeking to attach their equipment to utility poles in Vermont. One-touch make-ready and self-help will allow attaching entities to do some of the preliminary work necessary to prepare utility poles for their new attachments under certain circumstances. The proposed provisions loosely parallel recent changes to the Federal Communications Commission's rules on pole attachments. Now, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hear from you, members of the public, about the proposed changes. Today's hearing is not the only opportunity to submit comments. We had a hearing in Brattleboro last week. You can also provide written comments using the Commission's electronic document management system, EPUC, which is available online using the links on the Commission's website. You can also submit comments by direct mail or email. Please be sure to reference the case number 19-0252-Rule when submitting your comments. You can also subscribe to the case into Commission's documenting system, EPUC, and receive email notifications when documents are filed in the rulemaking. We have some handouts back here in the corner as well with more information on participating in the proceedings. You can also find them on the Commission's website, puc.vermont.gov. This hearing is being transcribed by a court reporter, and a transcript of this hearing will be available on EPUC along with all of the other documents related to the rulemaking. If you wish to speak tonight, please write your name on the sheet. If you haven't already, I've got a list of names started. But if you do decide you wish to speak and have it signed up, please let me know, and we can get your name on the sheet. This will assist the court reporter with the correct spelling of your name and help make the process more orderly. With that, we will now open the floor to public comment. I will start by calling the first person on the list. I have FX Flynn. And you can speak from right where we are. None of the microphones are working, so you can stay right in your chair and let us know, or how do you feel comfortable? Can you come up to the table?
Well, I think I'll, if you don't mind, I'll come over here so that everybody can participate. My name is FX Flynn. The initials are for Francis Xavier. I am the delegate from the town of Hartford to the EC Fiber Board of Directors, and I serve as vice chair of EC Fiber. And I wanted to use my time tonight to reiterate some of the basic realities that have already been frequently cited in legislative and regulatory proceedings. A single pole application covers a batch of as many as 200 poles, paralleling a roadway, often together with poles on connecting side roads. The initial application fee pays for a survey to identify which poles will require make-ready work to accommodate a new attacher. The pole-owning utility then sends the applicant an invoice due in advance, covering only its own work. The pole-owning utility notifies other existing attaching entities of their make-ready responsibilities, but the new attacher must arrange payments separately to each of them for any required work. In addition, the time allotted to complete the work is quite lengthy. Now, because of this, some poles will be touched twice. Some may be touched a third or a fourth time to make the pole ready for the new attaching entity. And beyond the actual physical visits to the poles, there's a lot of back-office work. There's a lot of payment processing. There's a lot of schedule organizing. And so this is the reality of our current multiple-touch make-ready world. So Act 79 envisions a world of one-touch make-ready, where instead of each attaching entity dispatching its own crew to service the poles, a single qualified crew could perform all the necessary tasks on each pole in the entire batch. And the resulting efficiencies in labor in the field and in the office, fuel consumption, CO2 emissions, all this comes together to significantly reduce total project cost time, not only for pole owners and the attaching entities, but for the general public as well, because traffic disruption can be minimized, services become available to the citizenry faster. So there's a whole bundle of goods coming into play here. EC Fiber's own experience, which covers 22,000-plus poles already, just over a quarter of all poles have been found to be some kind of make-ready work. Our 23-town Communication Utility District is typical rural Vermont, and so this ratio is likely to hold in other areas. Reducing the cost of make-ready is only possible in a one-touch make-ready world, and Rule 3.7 must facilitate that objective of Act 79. Now, I just want to finish by talking a little bit about pole replacement in a one-touch make-ready world. You know, some poles are so old and small that in order to allow for another attacher, the pole needs to be replaced with a taller one. Among the poles that EC Fiber applied for, about 3% of them required replacement in 2017, and only 2% in 2018. So replacing a pole proceeds with the installation of a new pole. Then the electric facilities get transferred. Then all the other attaching entities come over and move their wires over. And in most cases, this doesn't happen all at once, but there are a series of visits to the poles. And after the last transfer is made, the original pole is taken out. I think we've seen this all over Vermont. There's a lot of pole replacements going on. I know in Hartford, I see tons of dual poles, a small pole and a new larger pole. And when I turned onto the Turner Street Bridge tonight coming in, I saw the same thing. So I think it's widespread all over the state. A one-touch make-ready world, a lot of that, you know, six months, eight months, a year of looking at that, you know, goes away. And by the way, I live in Queche, and that's a big tourist destination. And we have all these double poles down Main Street. I would love to see that gotten rid of, because it's just a bad look. In any case, if you have one pole that needs to be replaced in a batch of 200, then the whole thing gets held up, because the other attaching entities don't want to go out and do 199 poles and then come back for the one. So they're going to wait until the one is done. So the recommendations that we're making and that are going to be discussed by others are all about allowing the make-ready work to go forward, getting the pole owners to focus on doing the replacements expeditiously, and giving us some leverage to really move that along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Next up, we have, oh, let me see if I do this right. I think Irv Tome has switched for a second. Is that correct?
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Irv Tome. I have been a resident of Norwich since 1975, and I have represented Norwich on the governing board of EC Fiber since it first convened in April 2008. Seven years ago next month, somehow I became chair. And I have been chair ever since. It's an unpaid volunteer position. And during that time, I've watched, I've seen EC Fiber grow from fewer than 50 miles of fiber optic network to almost 1,000. We have a few hundred miles still to build. Make-ready delays have been a major problem for us ever since the very beginning. And many of us involved in EC Fiber and our implementation partner, ValleyNet, have spent countless hours trying to resolve these problems. Each of the suggestions that we have offered during this rule proceeding has been based on our experience. We seek to improve the process through those suggestions by encouraging transparency, accountability, and more productive cooperation between the pole-owning utilities, incumbent attaching entities, and the newcomers, such as ourselves. And I have to say, on the one hand, we are very grateful to the PUC for holding these hearings. I have to say, we were deeply disappointed not to see any of our suggestions embodied in the proposed, in the August proposed draft rule. But we hope that this represents turning a new page. We concur with the submissions in this case both by the Public Service Department, Representative Riglin, and we will submit precise language for all of our suggestions in red-line form with explanatory text before November 5. Act 79 provides several kinds of assistance, including VITA loans to rural communities that seek broadband service for their residents, especially residents in areas that corporate providers deem insufficiently profitable. And Sections 19 and 20, which bring us here tonight, are integral to that strategy. Unless and until the pole attachment process is streamlined, problems such as we in EC Fiber have encountered will continue to plague other communications districts and other startup broadband providers all across the state. We're nearing the end of our build-out. But if we can't resolve these problems, some of the entities that hope to get funding from VITA will be unable to achieve financial stability within the required time. That's what makes this vitally important to the entire state's economy. Now, I thank FX for summarizing some of the basic facts. Oops, sorry. We have a number of things that we think are urgently needed changes to the draft rule. And several of us here will talk about different aspects. I want to talk mostly about one-touch make-ready. Actually, what the law calls for is, quote, and I'm going to read this, because it's extremely important. "The Public Utility Commission shall revise Rule 3.7 to implement the following: One-touch make-ready policies for pole attachments in the communication space. The Commission shall consider measures requiring pole-owning utilities to complete any needed pole replacements and related electrical work in sufficient time to make it reasonably possible for existing attaching entities in the communication space to comply with make-ready deadlines." That is vitally important. We're offering a more specific recommendation than we did in June and July, and I'll come back to that in a moment. "The application process for one-touch make-ready, as outlined in the rule, contains an impossibility. It envisions the new attaching entity submitting an application to the pole owner saying, 'We want to use one-touch make-ready.' It is the responsibility of the new attaching entity to ensure that its contractor determines whether the make-ready requested in an attachment application is simple make-ready." That's what this says. But that is asked for before the pole survey has happened. How can we certify that it's only going to be, quote, "simple make-ready" before there is a survey? In the same paragraph M, Section 1, Subparagraph 1, there are two or three more references to this requirement to certify that it will only be simple make-ready all before the survey occurs. Those passages should be struck. They are preposterous, with all due respect, and unreasonable. Now, I would like to come back to a central problem. As FX, my colleague FX, pointed out, if a pole needs to be replaced, that pole replacement will have to proceed make-ready work by all other parties. The pole replacement is not limited to, obviously, to communication space. The pole extends up into the power space, where the wires are, that nobody wants to touch. But that has to happen first. Until there's a new pole there, nobody else can transfer their attachments to it. And all the other entities are going to postpone their visits to the area until that new pole has been put in place. So, on the other hand, there's a concern, a reasonable concern, that that ought to be done by the pole-owning utility, which is why that language exists in Act 79, measures to require pole-owning utilities to complete any needed replacements in sufficient time to make it reasonably possible for existing entities to complete their work on time. So we have a suggestion, which we will submit in red-line form. But basically, we note that it's very rare for a large fraction of the poles covered by one application to need replacement. In effect, and it very frequently happens, that that's the only impediment to one-touch make-ready in the communication space on everything else. In effect, but for those replacements, the entire set of poles would qualify as simple make-ready. And so we believe that it's a mistake to follow the FCC practice of classifying the entire application as, quote, "complex" because of only those few poles that require replacement. Instead, we suggest that if the number of poles that do require advanced, I mean, complex work is fewer than 10% of all the poles in that application, that the pole-owning utility would be required to invoice the applicant for that specialized work. And after receiving payment for it, they would be expected to complete those pole replacements and electrical space work within one half of the total time that would be allowed for that pole application. And upon completing the pole replacements, then that application would be released to the new attaching entity's one-touch contractor, which could safely proceed with one-touch make-ready on all of the remaining poles and the newly replaced pole in that entity. I pause to make sure that this is clear. Is it?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
It will be good to see it in writing.
Yes, we are preparing, we have prepared it. It's submitted for writing. Frankly, we could submit it tonight, but as a courtesy to our friends at the power company, we're letting them have a first look at it so they can decide whether to acquiesce, oppose, or support.
And the red line also will be included, isn't it?
Yes, we're talking, speaking of the red line, we have this in detail in the red line. And the red line is accompanied by text explaining the reasoning for each of our suggested changes. I do want to jump ahead to one other thing and not steal my colleagues than Charles Thunder, but I want to say something about self-help. Act 79 clearly limits one-touch make-ready to the communication space. It does not make that distinction for self-help. We believe very strongly, and as Representative Riglin has pointed out, it is not consistent with Section 28 of Act 79 to limit self-help by excluding pole replacements or electrical space work. Officials of both CCI, the incumbent phone company, and GMP, the dominant utility in our territory, have confirmed to us that each company has upon occasion engaged outside third-party contractors in that type of work. We submit, therefore, that concerns that it would be unsafe to have an outside contractor do these things are specious. Second, it's a red herring in another way. So we seem paradoxical. But community broadband providers really don't want to do that kind of work. We really don't. The point is that if that recourse is present in the rules to be invoked after expiration of all the necessary time to get the work done, it's the very presence of that possibility, frankly, that brings parties to the table. Our colleagues in Maine tell us that since Maine instituted an unlimited self-help provision, it's never had to be invoked. That's the outcome we desire. But the possibility needs to be there. Its very presence in the rule will be its best protection against the invoked. Those are the points I especially wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tome. Next up, we have Daniel Childs.
Good evening. My name is Dan Childs. I'm a resident of the town of Brookfield. Some of you may have heard of Brookfield, or iconic floating bridge, a unique structure that spans the length of our village. I'm also a member of the governing board of EC Fiber. Brookfield, I'm going to give you some, how this make-ready problem impacts people on a real level. Brookfield has approximately 1,200 residents. In the entire town, there is not a single business, such as a gas station, supermarket, market, store, or anything else that is open to the public. This does not mean that there is no commercial activity in Brookfield. However, until this year, that commercial activity has been hampered by the lack of true broadband. As the owners of a small farm that produces honey cider and maple syrup, our ability to market our products was severely limited by truly pathetic bandwidth. Uploading anything other than plain taste of 250K was a near impossibility. If someone wanted to, if I wanted to upload a video, I could start it. I could go out and complete an hour-and-a-half worth of chores, come back in, find out the connection was interrupted. Brookfield, one of five other EC Fiber member towns, was supposed to be part of the EC Fiber 2018 build. Construction, the actual placement of fiber on the poles, was supposed to start in the summer of 2018 in Brookfield. Then it was the fall of 2018. Then it was to be completed by the end of March 2019. I got up in town meeting and actually said that. By the end of June 19, it still had not been done. And finally, it was completed at the end of October 2019, our 2018 build. And in fact, there's still a small part of our town that is still waiting to be built because of pole replacement issues. A lot of this delay was caused by delays in make-ready. This brings me to the issue that I would like to address in having read through the proposed rules. I would like to propose that Vermont go its own way as opposed to blindly following some of the guidance set out by the FCC. And I think that such a course is really set out in Act 79, which specifically states that, quote, "The FCC regulatory approach is unlikely to achieve the intended results in Vermont." And it seems that sprinkled throughout the proposed regulations are a number of provisions that defer to FCC guidance as opposed to looking as to what's best for Vermont. For example, in Paragraph C24, a pole owner may assert its right to 15 additional days for complex make-ready. I think that comes out of the FCC guidance. In Section L, which deals with self-help, pole replacements and work within the electrical space, self-help is permissible under Act 79, yet in the proposed rule Sections L5 and L6, it's either restricted or disallowed. Presumably, again, this is because of guidance from the FCC. Same thing in Section M, which deals with one-touch make-ready, designating an entire pole application as complex when only a small percentage of the poles within that pole application are complex, is again, comes from FCC guidance. And I think Irv has already talked about the proposal of EC Fiber to deal with that when less than 10% of the poles from a certain application are too complex. So I would just urge you again that Vermont set its own rules and not blindly follow the guidance of the FCC, especially where that guidance would delay implementation of true broadband throughout the state. At this point, Brookfield has broadband available to pretty much every resident who wants it. However, there are a lot of other rural communities in Vermont where such services are needed to compete and to prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Childs. Next up, we have Chris Recchia.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Recchia, R-E-C-C-H-I-A. Took me a long time to learn how to spell that, but I currently have learned to figure it out. I want to thank you all very much. Thank you, Attorney Howe, for doing this and for the initial taking of the draft. And thank you, Commissioners, for coming. Thank you, Stenoff, for coming here. I am a resident of Randolph. In May, I started as managing director with ValleyNet, which is the implementation company that's contracted with EC Fiber to actually finance, design, build, and execute this process. So I don't have a ton of experience with this, but I have observed since May how the make-ready process did delay as just as was described. That happened in town after town after town, where build schedules were delayed. And that results in a cascading effect that is a problem, because we have paid for that work. The money has been financed. We're paying interest on it. The companies are holding it. They're not doing the work. And then we also get behind, and so none of the revenue that we expected to come in to pay for the bonds is actually arriving. So, you know, in that type of scenario, months make a difference. Certainly, a year or more makes a difference. And as we know, in Vermont, the building opportunities are somewhat limited by bad weather, other things that happen in those strange months of December through March, April, May. Anyway, I want to emphasize a couple of things here. That what I have seen, it's a point that Irv made about this being necessary and really a firm ability to do the self-help work in order not to use it. It's odd, but the reality is that we have spent about 16% of our capital on make-ready applications and expenditures, and it has been responsible for virtually all our delay. What I want to say, though, in a positive sense, is that even while Act 79 was being debated and since the draft rule has been under consideration, things have gotten a lot better, actually, for both. CCI actually, although in 2017, they were way behind, in 2018 and in 2019, they caught up and they've done a really good job. And Green Mountain Power has stepped up to the plate and done a really good job since I have been there.
What do you attribute that to?
Right, I was just going to say, you have to decide for yourselves whether the action has caused the reaction or vice versa. I don't know.
On the same volume of application?
Yes, actually, on more. Truthfully, on more. And, you know, again, also, as was said, we are trying to help others, because we're at the tail end of this. We can manage and make do through here, but the reality is that any other CUD that we want to be successful in, frankly, ValleyNet, would love to be able to help those other CUDs with the experience we've had. They're going to require predictable timeframes and predictable costs in order to make this work. I also want to say that this is, the highest priority of this, as was said here, has to be the pole replacement, because nothing can really be done until that pole is replaced. And while I appreciate that some of the questions that were asked by Hearing Officer Howe, the ones about safety and concern about what the impacts could be and things like that, I think are answered by virtue of the fact that anyone working in the electrical space or on a pole that can affect electrical needs to be certified and competent to do that. And there are plenty of examples of contractors who have that experience. As was mentioned, both CCI and Green Mountain Power have confirmed they've used contractors that are able to do this work. When CCI owned poles jointly with GMP, they split up areas of pole replacement work. So CCI was doing pole replacements for the electrical stuff in their territories. And they need specialized training, and it needs to be safe. But they are all certified. And this rule promotes a list that is generated by those utilities themselves, so that we know that they will be comfortable with the people that are used. And picture, really, any storm damage. Anytime we have storm damage, there are contractors coming in, and they're all over the place to do pretty much everything on any of these poles. So I don't think that should be a large concern. It is important that the work and the timing, which we feel is extremely generous and overly generous in the proposed rule, but it should be based on the number of poles that require work. work, not the total number of poles in the application. And as you've heard, only about 26%, 25, 26% require any make-ready work at all, which you don't know until after you've done the survey, but that has been typical of what has happened. And then only 2% or 3% of those require a replacement. But if you can prioritize the replacement, as you've heard, that really needs to be the focus. And in conversations with the utilities, I think they are willing to do that, and I think the challenge in this rule is to find a practical and fair way to do that, that everybody can live with and work with, and that's predictable. So I think that is really all I wanted to cover, except for to say that as a resident of Randolph, when I took this job, I went in and looked at the maps of predictable time that were going to get to my house. And it's like, you know, people joke in the office that it's like, well, all of our build is to be done in 2021, except for your house, Chris, which is going to be 2022. I kind of look at it like the captain of a ship, like instead of being the last one off, I'm going to be the last one on in terms of getting the service. And every day, I think about that as I try and upload or download a document, and how important this is going to be to Vermont's economy. And that's why, again, it's important to do this for the, really, all the other CUDs that are going to be coming along and trying to do this work. So thank you again very much for doing this. Thank you for your work. Thanks for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rechia. Next up, I have Richard Dybridge?
Dyvig.
I'm sorry, how do you pronounce that?
Dyvig.
Dyvig. Oh, like dyvig. D-Y-U-D-I-G.
Yes. I have a very simple assignment, you'll be happy to know. It's concerning the rapid resolution of disputes, which the rule calls for 120 days. And that is not rapid at all. It's quite a long time. And Maine has taken the forefront here and has a very expedited process, seven days from the original application. There's a decision.
Could you speak up just a little bit? Folks in the back can't hear if you want to.
So Maine has, you submit online a complete package, defense and everything, and two business days from the application is called for a conference call, and two days after that, submission, and seven days later, they make the decision. That may seem abrupt, but it works. It can happen that way. And they're right, you have a right to appeal at the end of that, but it's still a valid consideration to reduce 120 days down to a settlement. And I think the issue I have with the completion times for make-ready, depending on the poles, I think that that's, I'm repeating other people, identifying the poles in need of replacement and expediting those with the power company or even making ready yourself is a high priority for your decision.
Mr. Dyvig. Next up, I have Ed Stanek.
Yes, hi. I'm Ed Stanek from Barry City. A way of introduction, I was employed by the state of Vermont for 31 years as a district coordinator for the Act 250 process. And I mention that simply because we were there for the first few generations of mobile phone infrastructure, the towers and the antennas. We became very familiar with the 1996 FCC RF EMF regulations and the concept of federal preemption. It was very clear that the district commissions were barred in consideration of any health impact under Criterion One parentheses A of Act 250. I am here this evening to request that the PUC consider revising the proposed rule to disallow pole attachments for any 5G-related infrastructure pending consideration of further evidence and legal authorities in separate docket proceedings. I'm also here, quite frankly, to represent my interest to three grandchildren, Ruby, Saman Elliott, who live in Burlington, Vermont. My understanding is, and I might have this wrong, that the first rollout or the first implementation of the rule will involve utilities in the urban areas of Vermont. I'm extremely concerned about the potential health effects on those children and their peers from the health effects of the 5G infrastructure. As I understand the proposed rule, I see it as analogous to Rule 51 in Act 250, the so-called minor application rule. So as I understand this rule, it provides for an expedited process based upon the premise that there are either de minimis construction going on or that there are no substantial impacts under any of the considerations of the PUC. But I believe such is not the case with respect to the potential for the installation of the 5G infrastructure as pole attachments. As I'm pretty sure you're aware, Congress, through the Federal Telecommunications Act, delegated to the FCC exclusive authority to deal with the so-called, quote-unquote, environmental effects of EMF. That phrase, environmental effects, has been interpreted by the courts and others to include health effects. In 1996, the FCC did adopt guidelines with respect to EMF, but only with regard to the thermal effects, the thermal health effects. To this day, the FCC has not adopted any guidelines for the non-thermal effects from the EMF. Interesting, when I did research here in Vermont, of course, you probably know, we're in the Second Circuit. The Second Circuit never considered this question of federal preemption with respect to EMF until the case came down to the Second Circuit originating in Vermont. In that case, and I will provide written version of my testimony with the citations, that case was Freeman versus Burlington Broadcasters. It was a decision in 2000. And in that case, the Second Circuit discussed for the first time the concepts of preemption, deference to a federal authority in interpreting these regulations, setting the foundation for federal preemption. Two years later, the Second Circuit also considered a second case with respect to EMF. And in that case, they drilled down into the concept of field preemption. And that case was Sprint Spectrum LP versus Mills. More to the point, as I understand the former PS being now PUC process, the General Assembly inserted the Act 250 criteria for your due consideration in reaching decisions. And I just wanted to bring to your attention an Environmental Board decision that was specifically related to this concept of EMF and federal preemption, and it's a case called Burlington Broadcasters. Now, it involved the same tower, Burlington Broadcasters proposed, the Charlotte, Vermont, case I mentioned that went to the Second Circuit involving zoning. The Act 250 case did not go into the federal court system. So Burlington Broadcasters, an Environmental Board decision from 2004, as I understand it, is still good law. In that decision, the Environmental Board gave a thorough discussion of federal preemption. These are the application of Criterion One air of Act 250. The Board clearly held that the thermal effects were preemptive consideration by Act 250, but the Board implied, since the FCC never adopted any guidelines with respect to non-thermal impacts, the Board implied that it could be possible to consider those non-thermal health effects under Criterion One air of Act 250. But it never happened, because as we know, three years later, the Environmental Board was eliminated in favor of the Natural Resources Board, and another case never came up. And subsequent legislation assigned jurisdiction over the towers to our panel. So again, I ask you that you take consideration in your record of that Environmental Board Burlington Broadcasters decision. Now, I'm not an engineer or a scientist, that's for sure, but I am aware of a growing body of literature which is discussing the 5G technology and how it is substantively different from the early generations of mobile phone technology, both in terms of the infrastructure and the frequencies employed. I understand that others may have already provided, either through verbal testimony or written testimony, have provided the PUC with information about this different infrastructure and the impacts of 5G. The FCC has not adopted any guidelines specific to the thermal or non-thermal health effects of 5G. There is a case making its way through the Ninth Circuit, and that case is Sprint versus the city of Bowie, Maryland. And in that case, there's a great discussion of two things. One, a petition was filed with the FCC several years ago, asking the FCC to undertake rulemaking to adopt guidelines on the health effects of the non-thermal effects of mobile telephone transmissions. The FCC, to this day, has never acted on that petition. The FCC refuses to adopt a guideline on the non-thermal health effects from these transmissions. And secondly, there was a petition filed asking the FCC to adopt guidelines on both the thermal and non-thermal effects specific to 5G infrastructure. The FCC refused to undertake rulemaking in that regard. So there, we have a federal entity empowered with exclusive jurisdiction over this, setting the stage for federal preemption, and the federal agency is refusing to act for years. So where does this lead us? The concept of deference, as you can read in these cases, applies only when the federal agency acts in strict accordance with the enabling legislation and has not abused its discretion, such as by failing to act. Here, we have 5G infrastructure with an FCC that is clearly unwilling to adopt any health standards, any health guidelines specific to the thermal and non-thermal effects of 5G. Thus, there are no preemptive FCC guidelines regarding non-thermal effects. There are no FCC preemptive guidelines with respect to 5G infrastructure. Because there are factual, i.e. science-based, and legal bases to question the weight, the presumptive weight, of the 1996 federal guidelines, and given the Public Service Board's responsibility to safeguard the public good here in Vermont, I urge you to consider disallowing the use of the poles for the installation of any infrastructure attachments involving 5G technology, pending review of the health effects in a separate proceeding. And again, the bottom line point here is that I believe a cogent case can be made under the facts specific to 5G, that they do not qualify for federal preemption. And therefore, it is up to the Public Utility Commission to safeguard Vermonters from the adverse health effects from 5G. And as I said before, I'll reduce this to a written form and submit it to your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanek. Next up, we have Donald Saft.
Hi. I'm Donald Saft. I'm a teacher, I'm an artist, and I travel up here. Also, I'm in total agreement with what Ed said. We're all for, I'm also with a group called, co-founder of a group called EMF Safety for Vermont, which is a group of health advocates for citizens. And we're all for broadband, for fiber optic cable to the premises, a safe and secure way of getting internet. But we're very concerned that this, the pole bill that's coming up will allow 5G antennas to be in our communities. The things that 5G needs, they need the massive MIMO towers, and because it's a smaller cell, they need a lot more, a smaller wave. They need a lot more cells in our community, closer together. So every three to five houses, I've heard, and that means you can have a cell antenna outside your window over a bus stop, and we don't know, we don't know the health risks of that. There has been a recent study, it was a 10-year study, 10-year, $30 million study that showed definite connection to cancer in rats from exposure to microwaves. Because of that study, it's really unethical to do the same study on people. So what the telecom industry has decided to do is to not have a study. And in effect, we will be the study when it's put in. The microwaves we use for communication are very similar to the type of wave in the microwave oven. And you might say that it's a much lower wave, but the thing is, you can cook something in a microwave oven in three minutes, or you can put it on a very low setting and cook it in a week. You know, so in my view, it's still cooking, even if it's a slow setting. And they say it's the thermal effects, but it's not, it affects us on a biological level. You can't take a cold, wet kitten and warm them up in the microwave oven, because you'll kill them. It's not just a warming up. It affects us in our DNA, it affects us on a biological level. And that's our big concern. So we ask you to go very slowly in this process, push back. It makes me think about the telecom industry. Either they're just interested in profit and don't care about health risks, or else they actually want to hurt us. So I'd prefer to think like the best-case scenario, where they're just interested in profits, because the other side is too dark for me. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Saft. Next up, we have, it's Mark or Marky Weber?
Yes.
Marky, is that?
My name is Marky Weber, and I live in East Dumbersville, Vermont. And I've lived in Vermont since 1988, and I have worked as a nurse in Vermont since 1988. I came up here, I actually missed work this evening to come here, because this is really important to me. And I am also very concerned about the potential health effects of 5G and the fact that this, this rule, where you're considering citing these pole attachments with the one-touch make-ready, one-touch make-ready is to make-ready for 5G. There is no, as I understand it, there's no opportunity to slow or pause this 5G rollout. So that's why I'm here, because I consider this my opportunity to speak about this. There has not been any testing showing that 5G is safe for health. In the medical field, there's a principle called first do no harm. And we are conducting a massive, massive experiment with our own public health, and I'm really concerned about it. There's, there's a lot of research, international research, very, very solid research, that shows that there are negative health effects from non-ionizing radiation, which is the type that we get from cell phones. And 5G is a whole new level of that kind of exposure. And it's going to be, if it gets rolled out, it's going to be massive. We're all going to be swimming in it, having no idea that it's there, because you don't feel it. There are two types, when you're talking about health effects from radiation, whether it's ionizing, the kind you get from nuclear power or nuclear bombs, or non-ionizing. This, from cell phones is non-ionizing radiation. There are two types of health effects. The first is immediate health effects, and you need really massive doses for most people to notice any immediate effects. Thus, most of us are not going to feel anything when exposed to, you know, microwave radiation. You can sit your laptop on your lap, and you probably won't notice anything. Meanwhile, there are health effects that are happening. There was a study, I don't remember the actual time, but I can submit it in written public comments, it was published in PubMed, which is a very reputable source, where they actually induced diabetes in rats by exposing them to Wi-Fi radiation. It was 2.45 gigahertz, and this exposure was only an hour a day for three weeks, and they induced diabetes in these rats. So we're going to have a level of exposure if this 5G is rolled out, where it will be unavoidable. I mean, we can avoid cities, I guess, we can avoid going anyplace where it is, we can go hide out in the woods. I'd really rather not do that. You know, I like my technology, and I like You know, I like my technology, and I like having, having the opportunity to be in communication with the rest of the world. I love the fact that Vermont is concerned about and wants to have broadband. I think it's really wonderful. I would love to see us doing fiber optic to the premises. I have, I, I, I think that the concern to make sure that we are, we are up to speed and we have internet, you know, broadband internet access is great, but I'm not seeing any, any indication that anyone is speaking up for making sure that that is also done in a way that's safe. As far as I know, fiber optic is entirely safe, and fiber optic to the premises is great, but once you put that 5G there, we're being exposed, we don't know it, and, and I guess we'll find out the health effects, you know, ten years down the road. Our society, our healthcare costs are already completely astronomical, and the, I'm concerned about what it will do if this 5G gets rolled out in Vermont, so, so I would like to suggest that we put a pause on any of this one-touch make-ready and anything that is going to support the rollout of 5G until we have truly adequate investigation into the health implications. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. The last speaker I have on my list is Derek Jordan.
I wanted to thank you also for allowing us to speak and present ideas to your board, although some of it may not appear to be relevant to pole attachment, but I think it's worthy of consideration. And really, I'd like to just speak to you as a person, as a human, to other, other human beings. I am also a founding member of EMF Safety for Vermont, which were located in Brattleboro, but I really come before you today as a parent, as a recent grandparent, even just had a granddaughter a month ago, very excited about that. And of course, we all want to see a world, a world where our children are safe and their grandchildren and all that, and I am, I'm very concerned about the lack of public input, participation, consent, in terms of the citing of these small cell antennas, which can sometimes be located right outside someone's bedroom window, because there's been no safety testing, as others have mentioned. In fact, Senator Woodall, in the US Congress, did a hearing before the FCC, and you can find it on YouTube, and he asked the FCC representatives if there had been any testing to show that 5G was safe, and they said, no, there has been no testing on the public. And then he asked, is there any plans to have any testing of 5G for safety? And they said, no, there is not. So I'm concerned about our children, ourselves, our average people being exposed to this untested technology, which has actually been proven to be harmful, and I'm not just talking about 5G here. There's been thousands of peer-reviewed medical studies on 3G. The test that Donald referred to earlier was a US toxicology study, $30 million dollar study, just came out fairly recently, and this study was done with 3G, proving cancer and other health effects. So it's 5G, as I'm not a scientist, I'm actually a musician, so I'm not technically oriented in the science field, but my understanding, from what I've read, is that this technology, 5G, is exponentially stronger, more intense than 3G. There'll be, there'll be more of it, there'll be more antennas, that'll be cited much more frequently in a populated area. Now, I live in Dumbarton, Vermont, on a dirt road. It's not common to me. I don't see 5G coming to my house, and in fact, I had someone come to my house and do an EMF sweep to remove all of the registering EMF frequencies that she found that could be potentially harmful. So smart meters, we do have an opt-out in Vermont for smart meters, right? There's a reason for that. We had recently a bill passed in the legislature, Bill H. 513, which was the rural broadband bill, and as part of that bill, our group was able to get an amendment to the bill to create a health report, okay? Which is great, on 5G, on the safety of 5G. There's a reason why Senator Brown made this amendment, so that we could find out if there was any possible cause for harm from the research. Dr. Bill Irwin is conducting that report for the Health Department, and he's a radiation specialist. I also work with Bill on the decommissioning, Vermont decommissioning panel, appointed by the legislature, to talk about all the issues around decommissioning. So I know Bill from five years of working with him. He's going to prepare the report, hopefully he will look at some of the evidence that we presented him, showing biological harm from wireless radiation. You might know, know or may not, that there's no insurance company, including Lloyds of London, that will insure any harm caused by wireless radiation. It's a fact, you can look it up. Why is there no insurance company that will represent, pay out for health claims? Because they read the health studies. They read them, they know what's in them, and they want to avoid, in the future, what they have to deal with, with big tobacco and asbestos, and they're covering their you-know-what, so they don't have to have this come out in the future, okay? If they won't do it, they must have a reason, and I suggest, humbly, I ask you to look into this and understand why many of us in Vermont and elsewhere around the country are so concerned. Many schools, towns, cities, states are pushing back against 5G because they have also read these studies, okay? So people are concerned, and we want to use the precautionary principle. Let's find out if it's safe. I like my cellphone. I would like to keep using my cellphone. It's a 3G phone right now, maybe 4G, but I'm hearing that next year, they're going to be changing the phones, and if we don't get 5G phones, they won't work, I'm hearing rumors about this, I really hope that's not true. But that's, and the reason why, 5G is a really different technology. It uses beam-forming directed beams. Why is that a bad thing? Because if you have a cellphone, the current technology is waves, right? They spread out, but if you have a beam, and your cellphone's here, that beam's going right to your head, all right? Specifically targeting your brain, okay? So these are basically just some of my concerns. I really appreciate you listening and taking and making a public comment on this. You're very concerned, and we hope that you can understand. I know it's not specific to pole attachments, except for the fact that they would be going up in neighborhoods in front of people's houses. We have pictures of these small cells that have already been placed in Burlington, right in front of people's houses. Be happy to send you those photos. The 4G, they're 4G small cells, right? If they are enabled, they could, 5G could be easily upgraded by software, by the push of a button. That's how they're designing them. So they're saying, it's not 5G. No, it's not 5G until they push the button. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Mr. Jordan was the last speaker on our list. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak?
My name's Susannah Jones. I live in Walden. I don't have a phone, actually I have a phone, but it has a cord and it's plugged into the house wall, you know? Thank you. I'm here also because of my concerns about 5G, and I just want to add a couple of things, and people have already said a lot. I'd just like to add that the World Health Organization has come out against the rapid rollout of 5G because of the public health risk. Two hundred and thirty-six scientists, which is a significant portion of the body of research scientists on radiation, cited a petition warning of the potential health risks and public safety around 5G. And that toxicology, the US Department of Health, the toxicology study that was released in March, said there is clear evidence, and that was done on 3G and 4G, there is clear evidence that the emissions from towers and the phones themselves cause cancer. And so I've heard people at the PUC in the past say that it is the job, the duty and the obligation of the PUC to protect the public, protect our health and safety, and here's your chance to do it now. Thanks.
Ms. Jones, anybody else?
Yep. For those who don't know me, I'm John Verybath. I work for and represent Tonight, Vermont's for a Clean Environment. I did speak briefly behind the camera when I was down in Brattleboro at your hearing last week. Thank you for accommodating me. And I'm here to speak with more specificity about the pole attachment rule and its enabling of essentially the blanketing of our communities going forward with 4G upgradable to 5G and 5G radio waves, or RFR. So back in, and I'm going to speak to the health implications of that, that is why I'm here tonight primarily. Back in March of 2018, there was, and this has been mentioned already, there was a scientific peer review of a landmark US government study that concluded there is clear evidence that radiation from mobile phones causes cancer, and specifically it causes a type of heart tissue cancer in rats that is too rare to be explained as a random occurrence. That study was then evaluated, peer evaluated, there was a group of peer-reviewed scientists that evaluated that study that was done by the NTP, and the National Toxicology Program with the US Department of Health and Human Services. And they actually thought that conclusions rendered by the scientists that performed that study were actually more conservative than the study's outcomes found, and so they actually repeatedly upgraded the confidence levels in other areas of concern that the study evaluated, and they found that there was clear evidence of cancer in brain and adrenal glands, so they actually augmented the conclusions of the very same report. And I'm, I and Vermont's for a Clean Environment will submit all this information to you when I'm speaking to. Over here. Not only does it cause cancer, but there was an evaluation of genotoxicity of cellphone radio frequency radiation in male and female rats and mice following subchronic exposure, and the results of that assay showed significant increases in DNA damage in the frontal cortex of the male mice. They looked at two RFR frequency modulations in the course of this study, and both modulations resulted in DNA damage. So we're talking mutagenic effects now here. They found DNA damage in the frontal cortex of male mice, leukocytes of female mice, and hippocampus of male rats. The latter two were only the CDMA frequency modulations. The increases in DNA damage judged to be equivocal, equivocal, were observed in several other tissues of rats and mice, but they did conclude that it does cause DNA damage. As has been mentioned by Susannah and others, the World Health Organization found that cell phones, cell towers, Wi-Fi smart meter, Wi-Fi smart meters, decked phones, cordless phones, baby monitors and other wireless devices all emit non-ionizing radio frequencies, which they classified as a potential carcinogen. This confirmed what IARC found. IARC is the International Agency for Research on Cancer. These are all prestigious organizations, this is not tinfoil hat stuff here, folks. IARC found, reached similar conclusions that these radio emissions, RFR emissions, are possible carcinogens, to-be carcinogens. To-be carcinogens, just for urination, that category would include, in terms of similar risk, DDT, exposures to DDT, lead and engine exhaust. It's been mentioned a number of times that, and I did a little web research, it's been mentioned that Lloyds of London excludes coverage for injury from RF and EMR exposure claims, and so I wanted to confirm that. In fact, I found recent policy language, the direct language from Lloyds, or the company that issues the policies on behalf of Lloyds of London, which is actually not insured, themselves are a collective of insurance companies, prominent insurance companies around the world, they call themselves a syndicate, and so Lloyds is kind of the overarching body, and then they have actually these, they've hired consultants to evaluate risk, and there's a study from 2010 where they evaluated risk back from that point in time. They didn't have the information we have now that absolutely shows that there, that it's a carcinogen. But the risks were substantial enough, looking back through time, back to the 90s, that they concluded that from an insurance company standpoint, from a risk management standpoint, to insure claims, health claims, liability claims for manufacturers and the AT&amp;Ts of the world, you know, the providers, to insure them would be tantamount to what they did in the past with asbestos. The claims by the asbestos industry were that, you know, there's no conclusive evidence that asbestos causes cancer, i.e. mesothelioma. And so the regulators at the time, you folks are now the regulators at this time for this technology and this concern, they said, well, okay, yeah, there's nothing conclusive, so we're not worried about it, and there's an overriding greater public interest, health and safety interest provided by the use of asbestos. We have asbestos smoking jackets that dad wears when he smokes his pipe and falls asleep in the armchair, there's asbestos insulation we use, et cetera. And they said the overriding public interest is served by using this. In hindsight, they realized that was a big mistake. As a result, Lloyds has decided, we are not going to cover any claims for this, and I will provide you the language. This is quote, "The Electromagnetic Field's Exclusion." Exclusion 32 is a general insurance exclusion and is applied across the market as a standard. The purpose of the exclusion is to exclude coverage for illnesses caused by continuous long-term, non-ionizing radiation exposure, i.e. through exposures from mobile phone and infrastructure transceivers. The policy document further states exclusions, this is on page six, "We will not, A, make any payment on your behalf for any claim, or B, incur any costs or expenses, or C, reimburse you for any lost, damaged, legal expenses, fees, costs sustained by you, or pay any medical expenses for," basically what I just explained, exposure to RF and EMR. expenses for," basically what I just explained, "exposure to RF and EMR." So it's real. It's, you know, it wasn't too long ago when folks came up with the idea, "Let's go back and start raising our food organically." And there's a lot of eye rolling that went on. And I would like to remind you that here we are in 2019, and we have a lieutenant governor that's an organic farmer. So, maybe it wasn't so crazy then. Lastly, and I know there's been this fear, let me find the language, that the FCC, the 1996 Telecom Act precludes your regulating for this, for public health and safety. It's not true. And I'll cite the language, and you can divine it for yourselves. "No state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities," the nature of speaking to tonight, "on the basis of the environmental effects," I'm emphasizing environmental effects, "of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the Commission's regulations concerning such emissions." So, they have set a standard for what maximum exposure is for environmental effects. They were requested, as Mr. Stanek stated, and they were by Inspector General, I believe, evaluated what their charge was. In fact, they found that they never performed or had an outside entity, competent entity, qualified entity, perform health and safety evaluation of these technologies. They were required to. So the inspector general, under the authority provided them, directed the FCC to conduct that study back, I believe, in 2011. They have yet to do it, and, you know, they're not going to do it. So, because that summarizes my concerns, and I'd ask that you, and last, what I'd like to say is what I said at the last meeting. My organization and many others that are in this room again tonight participated in good faith in the rulemaking process. And like Irv said, with regard to his level of participation, which was every meeting, none of our concerns were taken into account in the development of the language of these rules. There's not any indication that any of our concerns were taken into account. And I would ask that, when and if you provide, that first, you do, you perform a response to this summary of all these comments, and that you don't do what some of my former peers used to do, and they didn't want to deal with, address with controversial subjects, by saying, "Disagree" in a response of the summary, or "Not applicable." I ask that you research what we're saying, you research what the FCC charges and limitations are in the 1996 Telecommunications Act, and you state one way or the other what your opinion is of that. Don't dodge it, please. That you evaluate, that you take, well, I ask what you, what others have asked, that you bifurcate this process, that you move with due speed, fiber optic, whatever you need to do to get those pole attachments in place. But in keeping with the spirit of Act 79, where there were concerns raised, i.e. the Health Department, the Vermont Department of Health, was instructed to perform evaluation of peer-reviewed, independent, independent, peer-reviewed studies of health and safety implications of these technologies, that you pause this, don't rush to judgment, let's take our time, let's do the right thing here, and make sure we know what we're implementing here before we blanket everybody, our children, our grandchildren, with this, with these frequencies. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments?
If I may, again, Chris Rakia. I want to acknowledge and appreciate the two different issues you've kind of heard about here and tie them together a little bit, just to say, everybody that was here from EC Fiber and vowing, I believe, in fiber to the home, and that's what we do. But we are here with one motivation, which is that we have seen ourselves get stuck and not be able to afford and bring this to the rural people that we're trying to serve affordably because of these delays. And that is our only motivation behind the make ready. So what I guess I would ask for all of us is, and believe me, I'm one to look at unintended consequences, like half my life has been spent trying to figure out what the unintended consequences are of any action I was going to take. The other half has been spent dealing with the unintended consequences that have occurred. I think what we're hearing here is, I just would ask that we not throw the baby out with the bathwater here if there is an issue that needs to be addressed, because what we are speaking about is fiber to the home, trying to do that economically, and we are, we have been delayed and stymied in that process. So we got to figure that out. That's all. Thank you.
I'm sorry to start that. This will be very brief. I had meant to distribute this chart just to show the economic significance of make-ready delays. This is a compilation of all the poll applications that we submitted for our 2018 construction season. There were 40 poll applications in all comprising 6,155 polls to be worked on by a single poll, yeah, submitted to, a single poll-owning utility. And this tabulates how many polls needed work, how promptly or not they were accomplished, and the total amount that we had prepaid for the work. There are, is a copy there for each of the...
Will you file this as well?
We will. It will be part of what we filed, yes. But the total, for example, three poll applications covering 577 polls, which only 9.4% of all the polls that we're dealing with had 25 polls in them that sat that needed replacement, we had prepaid 100, almost $142,000 for that set of polls. And they were between 100 and 180 days late. That's late relative to the current standard rule of 120 days. And I also wanted to reiterate that the current rule bases the timeframes on the number of polls, it speaks of on which make-ready, make-ready work on how many polls. But the proposed rule goes back to the total number of polls in each application, not the smaller number that actually are found to need make-ready work. We feel this is enough, this defies common sense, and actually is a step backwards, if we go ahead.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Stay on your line of 577. I just want to make sure we understand what this is.
Yes.
You, you applied for 577.
We submitted three poll applications.
Right.
The numbers of polls in those three applications added up to 577.
And the 9.4% is the percent of all the polls we asked for?
That's right. That's 9.4% of the total 6,155 we had, we needed to have back here. And out of those 577, 25 had polls that needed replacement. Those applications came in very late.
So, the percentage of all polls, that column, refers to a number that is not on this chart?
No. Each of those, the third column represents the second column divided by the total at the bottom.
Thank you.
If I may, I neglected to bring one item up enough, in order to keep my job, if I could just bring that item up. Thank you. What I neglected, I was kind of flustered with my paperwork, didn't see it. There's aesthetic implication with what I've learned or called from the industry, can antennas, these other apparatus that they attach to the poles. I was driving in to this hearing tonight, and I was looking at telephone poles, and yeah, we see the wires, but they more or less mimic a tree, you know? They're from a tree, they go with a tree, they were a tree at one point in their life. This rule does not speak at all to the aesthetic implications of adding this stuff all the way down the pole. And these things, these tech, these apparatus will be boxes and can antennas will be stuck on the poles at various heights. And there may, in more urban areas, be competing companies that will want to put their own antennas on. So now, these things have the potential to be much wider and look very different than was ever anticipated when they were put up. And I know for every other technology, you evaluate solar and wind and everything, it's a, aesthetics are a real consideration. And cumulative effect is, is one consideration that's, that's performed under the Act 250 review, which is also what is done under Section 248. So I had asked that you, again, not with the fiber, but with the wireless technology that seems to be part of this rule, that you bifurcate this, get the fiber optics segment of the rule moved through as quick as you can, and make it as friendly as you can to the folks who are trying to get this stuff installed. And the wireless technologies that's, that are the controversial aspect of providing high-speed internet, that you slow this train down, you allow for a fuller evaluation. You know, the industry is relying on government. Government cannot be sued, so there's no risk to you all getting sued. So you can just roll this stuff out, and there's case law out there already that says, the federal courts have said, "Well, if the states are okay with it, if the federal government's okay with it, then it must be okay." And you can't make a claim, I'm not, I'm not speaking very clearly to the nuances of those decisions. But they're basically saying, essentially, that they must have considered that, or it may, must not be a great concern. So, anyway, I just asked that you consider aesthetics as well as part of this rule.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, if you...
Yes. You know, I wanted to just take a moment to go back over our experience getting EC Fiber up and running from the get-go. Because although right now, this rule is part of a statewide, is part of a legislative and government strategy to find a way to bring broadband throughout the rural areas of Vermont, the EC Fiber's experience is the one thing that the legislature was able to point to and say, "Here's a model that's actually working, and it has some implications for other models that can work. And how can we replicate that model?" And they talked to us, and they found out that, you know, when we got off the ground by going around to the towns in our area back in 2007, saying, "Why don't we get a town meeting, our towns who agree to join together to bring fiber optic cable to every home in our area?" That was a massive amount of work by volunteers who were also JPs and select board members and interested citizens and technology people who had moved to Vermont because they were able to get DSL where they were, like me. And I still haven't gotten my $10,000. Apparently, I was about 15 years too early. But the bottom line is that in 2008, at town meeting, we were telling people, "We're going to have this done in three years," because we were going to be able to go to the banks, borrow the money, and build it out. We had no clue that there was, there were going to be issues putting the wires on the poles, the way they were. We had no clues that the, that the banks were going to be broke, and therefore, there was going to be no money. And so, we had to do this in very small pieces, almost on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis, where we could find a neighborhood full of people who could ante up, you know, $3,000 or $6,000 apiece, and then we could build a segment. And it took us, it took us years to get to a point where we sat back and we looked and we said, "We're not going to be done with this until 2030." And what were the barriers? So at that point, there had been some economic recovery, and we realized we didn't have the proper legal format to go to the municipal bond market. We would go to them and we would say, "Oh, we're in, we're in interlocal contract." And they would say, "Get out of here. My lawyers don't know what that is. Why aren't you a sewer district?" So we went to the state legislature and we said, "Can we have, can Vermont please allow for the creation of sewer districts but for communications?" And so, we got a law passed, Communications Utility Districts. Okay. Then, all of a sudden, we could borrow money from the banks, because they were like, "Wow, you guys have been in business for eight years, and you're profitable, and you have a business plan, and you can pay off your bonds." And so, there had been a long ramp. Well, right now, there are, there are people out around in other areas of Vermont who want to form these communication utility districts. And when they go to the bankers, the bankers are going to say, "Yeah, what's your record? Well, we haven't built it yet. So what do you want? We want to borrow $18 million to build out 400 miles of, you know, our part of Vermont." Well, you know, what's your experience? Who's your stake?" They're not going to get anywhere. So, based on this experience, the legislature has said, "Okay, look, let's look at all the problems that would create barriers for communication utility districts, because we have this rich history with EC Fiber." And the barriers that were identified were startup capital, make-ready issues, your responsibility is to implement the legislative strategy to get around the make-ready issues, to solve the make-ready issues. That's what this proceeding is all about. And it's your, the, the, this rulemaking is part of a statewide strategy to eliminate, to significantly eliminate the barriers of entities like the communication utility districts so that, so that we can move forward, other entities can move forward, and we can, we can solve the problem of bringing broadband to rural Vermont. Because we've seen that, we've seen that it's, it's not working with the wireless towers, it's not working with waiting for the cable companies, it's not working with waiting for the phone companies. It's not going to happen because it's not commercially viable. It has to be done on a community basis. So we need to have rules that give those communities of interest the ability to get the work done efficiently, cost-effectively, and expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I believe that's all our speakers for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No additional comments, and you are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.